This show on the road, Jim is not going to be joining us tonight. He has a work function, I believe, so you get me. Um, so I will call this meeting to order and read our emergency declaration. So this meeting of the Hop- oh, we were recording, perfect. This meeting of the Hopkinton School Board is being held remotely. There's no physical location for the meeting. The governor's emergency declaration and emergency order waived certain provisions of RSA 91A, the state's open meeting statute, allowing for public bodies such as the school board to conduct business meetings in a completely virtual environment. The public has access to these meetings via computer through Zoom. And you, I don't know if we're doing YouTube tonight, but definitely Zoom tonight, and we record them and post them up later. Um, all other aspects of RSA 91A still apply. Minutes of this meeting will be taken and made available per the statute, and the meeting will also be recorded and made available on the district website. All votes during the meeting will be roll call votes. All right, and with that, do you want to put those flags back up?
Okay.
And welcome.
That worked.
Looks good. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, welcome, everyone. We have a pretty full meeting this evening, but I'm confident we can get through everything. Do we want to pop the agenda up there, Steve? Or are we just our faces?
Happy to.
And then, did we have any additions or deletions from the agenda this evening?
We did. We are, we added interest classic sports, how it integrates with the mask policy. We're going to talk about that for a little bit. And then I did post, I don't think we need to, but just in case the board wanted to have a non-meeting to talk about negotiations, it's there, but that's not a priority for me. It's up to you, Andrew. So those are just the agenda increases, additions.
Great. And then, do we have any correspondence this week?
There were a number of correspondence on a number of issues, masks, sports, and other things in the correspondence folder.
All right. Great. And it looks like we have some minutes that we can go ahead and approve. Unless I'm missing anything. No?
Doing great.
Great. All right, so, um, do we have, and welcome, we've got, oh, I guess I didn't say who was in attendance. So in attendance this evening, we have Steve Chamberlain, Michelle Clark. We've got our, our principals, we've got Christopher Kelly, Bill Rosen, Amy Doyle, and Mandy Hibbard, and then our school board, we've got Norm Gupel, Seth A-frame, Rob Nato, me, Andrea Folsom, and as I said earlier, Jim O'Brien is unavailable to attend this evening. Luckily, we do this every week. All right, so with that, now we're on to approval of minutes. So, um, can I have a motion to recommend the Hopkinton School Board approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on August 11th, 2020?
So moved.
Look, there are only two of you to second this.
Second.
Thanks. All right. Okay, Rob.
Rob Nato, yes.
Seth.
Seth A-frame, yes.
Norm.
Norm Gupel, yes.
Andrea Folsom is a yes. All right, and do we have a motion to recommend the Hopkinton School Board approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on August 20th, 2020?
So moved.
Second. There we go.
Motion then second. All right, Seth.
Seth A-frame, yes.
Rob.
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm.
Norm Gupel, yes.
Andrea Folsom is a yes, and those minutes are approved. Do we have a recommendation for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the minutes of the non-public session of the August 20th school board meeting?
Second.
Great. So, moved to second, and we've got Norm.
Norm Gupel, yes.
Rob.
Rob Nato, yes.
Seth.
Seth A-frame, yes.
Andrea Folsom is a yes. Those are approved. And then, do we have a recommendation for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on August 27th, 2020?
Some move.
Second.
Great. Norm?
Norm Gupel is a yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Seth?
Seth A-frame, yes.
Andrea Folsom is a yes, and those are approved. All right. And with that, six minutes in, we've already arrived at public comment. We'll have two public comments in this meeting this evening. You are going to want to click on the raise your hand function at the bottom if you would like to speak, and then we'll call on you and bring you over. So raise your hand if you'd like. No? Okie dokes. Well, you'll have an option at the end as well. So with that, we are going to keep moving right along. So comments from the Hopkinton School Board. Does anybody have any comments they would like to share this evening?
You can go first, if it's, break the ice for all you other. All right, I'm going for it. So I just, I want to say thank you to everyone for all the excellent communication for going back to school. It has been a lot of excitement, a lot of excitement in the Google household. They're all excited about going back to school, seeing all their friends, and then I saw the supply list, and I got excited about going shopping for them. And I'm just, the appreciation to, you know, Chris, and Amy, and Bill, and Steve, and everyone that's gone into this. I, as a parent, as a board member, I really appreciate it. It's a lot of work. I know that there's been multiple discussions on what's going to be changing going back to school for these students, but I'm confident that we're going to bring, we're going to be able to give them a solid education. I think that's very important. So I just, it's a very exciting time. My, my daughter is excited to see Joan, and my, my kid, Max is excited to see Short. They're all, they're all getting excited. My high school's junior, you know, I can't get, I can't get a feeling from him, but he's excited to go to. So I just wanted to say thank you for the great communication and the emails to all the parents and to us to get going this year. Thank you all.
Great. Rob or Seth, do you guys have anything you want to?
I will, I will wait for game time. Thank you.
Sure. Seth, somewhere?
You've all frozen. Are you unfrozen?
I'm unfrozen. I don't know if you are.
From my perspective, you were all frozen. I agree with Norm, this has been a long road, but I think we're getting on to the right side of it. I was, I, my junior was excited to look up his schedule on Aspen, so that told me that we're ready to go and get back to school. So let's get on with it.
Great. Yeah, and I echo all the thanks. I know that this has been a long, like, six months, really. But we're, we're getting there. Only, only way is forward. All right. So, President, do we have any, we have no presentations or staff reports tonight. So we are up for items for board discussion. So Steve, I will turn it over to you.
Sure, we just like to, we've done the last couple of meetings, is just provide an update where we are in the opening and all the planning in schools. And as I said, Bill's got a kindergarten session, so we'll start with Bill and, and just provide an update where we are in HMS planning.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, tonight at 6:00, we have our kindergarten orientation, first ever on video conference, so that'll be very interesting. So I'll be going back and forth a little bit. So we've made great progress this week. I think all the schools have. The most important thing for me is staffing is all set, because that is, that is the piece that everybody, every building administrator just pines for. And so, at least at the moment, right, on September 3rd. So we're going to have two remote teachers. Kathy Pepper, longtime kindergarten and first grade teacher, is going to be the remote teacher for K1, although she's going to be teaching it from her classroom. She wouldn't have to, certainly, but I think she's a type of person, if you know her, like most of us, that she wants to be with the community, and she wants to be around kids and, of course, around her colleagues. So I think it's a great motivator, if you can do it, because clearly she's not teaching remote, you know, because she wants to be home, she really wants to be with kids. So I'm excited about that. And then grades two and three will be Meredith Post. Meredith has been a third grade teacher, so the, the grades line up really well, which I'm glad about. They are going to be multi-age, so there is, you know, there's no way we'd have enough remote teachers, enough kids to do one per grade. So the, the multi-age is close, and I think it'll be fine. Obviously, a little tweaking goes on there, because the curriculums are different, but I'm confident that both teachers are going to handle that really well. Meredith has been thinking about remote teaching for quite a while, and, and she and Kathy Pepper already, plus we had a kind of a remote committee going on the last few weeks at Harold Martin. So together, we sort of have a good schedule going, and, you know, we're really reinventing this whole thing. It's going to look a little different than it did in the spring, for sure. I'm sure throughout the district. Result of Meredith becoming the remote teacher, third grade is our largest group by quite a bit. So Lori Oberton, God bless her, is going from second grade to third grade, essentially taking Meredith's spot in third grade. She also is, has been a second and third grade teacher during the years I've known her. So it was not a difficult, is not a difficult transition for her at all. So that's good news. And she's even looping with some of her kids, a few that she had last year. Class lists are out. I know that, because I get lots of emails. But for the most part, it went really well. We had to move very few kids from the teacher they originally had in the spring, when they found out who their teacher was. Obviously, you know, with Lori moving, that, that was a bit of a shift. A few changes, but nothing major. Kindergarten went out yesterday, but their whole road to the class list was very different, because they did screening this week. Today kindergarten did a meet and greet, and then tonight at 6:00, we're going to do a very unusual Google meet, meet with the parents. Also, we had to tweak a little bit with HMS and Maple Street siblings, but that worked out really well, thankfully, too. So they're on the same, same day, the same team. This weekend is going to be my logistics weekend. I think it is probably for all of us. I have a lot of things set, but they're not really articulated really well yet, so I'm going to work this weekend on, on sort of the handbooks for both staff and, and community, you know, everything from pickup and drop off. And it's obviously made complicated, but we want to keep a cohort together. You know, for instance, just to give you a little slice of my life, I think it's kind of cool. Today, we talked about cohorts, and we really want to keep the small cohorts together for the whole day as best as possible. And that's, you know, seven or eight or nine kids, you know, one of the teams from, you know, two of the days of the week. But it's problematic in the morning, because all the kids just sort of arrive via bus or parent pick or parent drop off in the morning. So we're trying to figure out how to still keep the cohorts, or if it's okay if we have a little larger cohort for by grade level. And trying to keep kids together at recess will be interesting. So those are the sort of things we're, you know, obviously never had to worry about before. And, and, you know, I was running around the building, getting people's opinions and that sort of thing. We're working, as I mentioned, about remote learning, expectations for synchronous and asynchronous learning, that sort of thing. We got some meet and greets coming up, grades one, two, and three next week, and perhaps some assessments. We have a soft opening, kindergarten, fourth grade, seventh and ninth grade all have a soft opening. And for kindergarten, it'll be just Team A for the morning, like 8:00 to 11:00 on Thursday, Team B will be on Friday, 8:00 to 11:00 as well. And I won't say too much, because I know Normal wanted to talk about it. We joked about that before, but construction really does move forward at Harold Martin. If you look by, I did a little video today, which I'll get out. We have, you know, the, I guess you call them the, the temporary walls erupt, concrete's being poured, rebar is up, and it's just exciting. It looks like you can kind of obviously see the, the outline. So, so that's, that's my, my pitch for today. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And since Bill is going to have to pop off, did anyone have any questions for Bill about Harold Martin? No? Excellent. Well, thank you so much for the update. It's really helpful, and good luck tonight. Waiting to all this kindergarten.
I'm demoted.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
Excellent. Okay. All right. Amy, you're up.
Right. Very similar to what Bill just said. The building just is really starting to come alive. It makes, you know, having the staff back and having them in the building, it just is such a, such a great feeling. My staff has been extremely flexible and nimble during this time. As Bill was talking, as the results of the registration came in, you started to look at the staffing needs, and it was necessary for us also to have two remote teachers at Maple Street. So longtime fourth grade teachers Barb Jenkins and Trish Roberts will be our remote teachers. And then it was necessary to reassign the kids that were assigned to their class for this coming year to other teachers. So we have gone through that process, and there it was necessary to move a fifth grade teacher to fourth grade. And longtime fifth grade teacher Chris Jakes volunteered to do that. And so it was just wonderful to see the staff coming together and really looking at the needs of the students and the building, and putting themselves out there and being vulnerable and taking the chances to teach those other grade levels. So I'm just so appreciative of the staff that I have. This week, we also released our cohort teams. As Bill said, you know, we have received some messages from parents, but overwhelmingly, I think things went pretty well. Working really hard to try to accommodate parents and families who have work-related or other scheduling needs. We've tried to really look at those and accommodate them when we can. We're excited next week to welcome our fourth, our incoming fourth graders to an orientation. They'll be in on Thursday and Friday next week. Team A will be in on Thursday, and Team B will be in on Tuesday, I'm sorry, on Friday. The fifth and sixth grade teachers are going through and reaching out to their new students. Some are doing physically distanced meetings out on the playground. Others are doing remote or virtual meetings. Some are doing phone calls. So just the, the process of making that initial connection, especially if the teacher was different than what they knew from the spring. Again, overwhelmingly, parents and families have been really accommodating and understanding that this is just a really unique time. Kids are being flexible, so happy about that. As Bill also mentioned, this weekend, and, you know, tomorrow, this weekend will be a lot about the logistics of how do you open a school and keep kids safe? We'll be looking at things like arrival and dismissal, lunch and recess. You know, how do you, how do you do that? How do you keep kids safe? How do you keep the cohorts together? We've got a really great new way that we're going to try to do specials. Our specials, specialists came up with a model that they'd like to try that decreases their exposure to the whole building. So our students will be having one specialist for about a two-week block every day, rather than just having, you know, a special every day, every, once every week or every day, they'll have the same specialist for an entire week. And so that, that's an interesting way to look at how those cohorts can be kept together. Our construction also continues, the bathrooms. I know I keep talking so excitedly about the bathrooms, but wow, they are just really great. The ramp is really coming together. It was interesting, one day, as I was walking, I thought, wow, it's really, it's really bright down here. And as I was walking, I said, oh, that's because there's no roof. You could like see to the heavens. I said, okay, so we have a roof there now, and there's, sheet rock went up, and we're still waiting on the railings. New flooring went in. I know that if you haven't seen the, the product that we're using, it is just so neat. It, it looks like carpet, but it's not carpet. And it just really makes such a, a great impact in, in that area. So they'll be finishing our deep cleaning. I think, I think we're scheduled for Saturday, is what I was, was told at the last building committee meeting. But that Main Street area should be cleaned up next week. And, you know, just excited to continue the work and see students in the building next week.
Excellent. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Nope.
I'm going to demote you out of here, too, so you can go.
Bye, Amy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Now we're dropping, but it's good. All right. Chris, you're up.
Great, thank you so much. So yeah, it is exciting to get the staff back into the building and start just having some conversations about, you know, what they're looking forward to, but also talking to them about some of the things they have some concerns about. It, it does, you know, give a little sense of normalcy when you have a chance to interact with your staff and, and just, and just hear their thoughts about the upcoming school year. And just kind of keeping up with some of the updates that I've been giving. So we are at 14 withdrawals now, but we're at 19 new registrations. So we are at a plus five overall in our school, which I think is, is exciting. And, you know, we're wrapping up two weeks of professional development. We just wrapped up two days of collaboration days, where our staff had the opportunity to talk about students moving from one grade to the next, students who are on IEPs and 504s, so they can prepare to see those students in their classrooms, when we have a chance to see them a week from Monday. As you heard Seth allude to, the master schedule has been built and has been committed, which has allowed our teachers and our students to see their schedules. So now we're working hard in the guidance team, or with the guidance team, just to adjust some of our student schedules. You know, just because it's a little later than, than we normally publish our schedules, we typically like to try to massage these schedules as best we can to get as many of the requests satisfied. Rebecca really worked hard to get those requests taken care of ahead of releasing the schedule, but still, there's, there's still some work there to do for our school counselors. So we'll be busy next week adjusting schedules for students. I've been busy walking the class, walking the halls, checking on classrooms, working with some of our staff to ensure that we're, our desks are six feet apart. Some of the classrooms that are a little bit more tricky for us of those classes in the English alcove, because it's just triangle shaped. So, but we were able to make it work. And I've been having a lot of conversations with Noah and his custodial staff about steps that we can take, or we will be taking, to clean before and after lunches. So to ensure that those, those desks and chairs and tables are ready to accept the new lunch staff or group that comes in. We've been busy putting together our communication to families and to students. So last Sunday, we sent a rather large, I think it was four pages long, letter to our, to our families, just talking about the day one, day two schedule, about the mask policies, the hand sanitizers that we've put in around the buildings, reminding that water fountains, only the, the bubblers will not be used, because that's going to be an important thing for them to know, that they'll need to make sure they bring a water bottle, no backpacks, all of that stuff. So it's just been a flood of information since Sunday that we've given them. And then this evening, we sent out individual grade level letters as well, that also talked about for the seventh and ninth grade, the soft opening, how we were going to split up the groups. So Rebecca and I, we're working on that today, taking a look at our Team A and Team B group lists. We, in those letters we sent home, we, we let people know where the general breakdown was going to happen, A through, A through K, L through Z, but also let them know that we may have to massage that a little bit. I think I mentioned that in the last board meeting. So we're working to get out as much information as possible this week. So, and I've been feeling, you know, I would say a fair amount of emails just clarifying some things and answering some, some further questions. I did have the opportunity today to take the elevator to the fifth floor to bring up a couple trash barrels to a staff member. And it was, it was the first time I, yeah, I went out into the new hallway. So it was kind of, it was kind of neat. I wasn't going into a classroom. So I appreciate the work that's been done with that. So we've also been taking a look at how do we get our students into the building, and that was described in our letter, that, the letters that we sent home this afternoon and this evening. So I think, you know, I think things are starting to fall into place. When I, I will, I will say that this is the first time, probably in three and a half weeks, I probably walked out of the building feeling okay. You know, I mean, this, as, as Bill and Amy have said, there's still some logistical things. I think we need to work on all three buildings, but I was feeling a little better today. And as we continue to look at just our, our coverage for staff, staff who are going to work remotely, you know, we're working hard to try and figure that out and, and make sure we have our coverage there. I think we're on the right track. I think we'll be able to get it done. We just have to be thinking about that. If we were to change models, instructional models, it may mean that we have to really take a look at how do we hire staff to cover, to cover some of these staff members who would be teaching remotely, because we wouldn't be able necessarily handle it internally, as we're trying to do now. So that will be something that we'll have to think about later on down the line, and we'll discuss, you know, with Steve and at the leadership team level before we get to the board. So working hard, getting there, and looking forward to a week from Monday, where we're, we're back into full swing and, and doing our orientation with the seventh grade and ninth graders next Thursday and Friday.
So can you just explain again? I don't, I guess I didn't get it. So for teachers who are going to be home, what will be happening in their classroom for the students that are in school?
So we have two instructional assistants that were learning center specialists that we spoke to this week, that will be utilizing their efforts to monitor those students who are in the classroom.
And will the teacher be remote into that classroom?
Right. And I've talked with Matt Stone about how we can do that, having a laptop in there and utilizing the camera on the laptop to focus in on the class, so that the teacher could see the class and project the teacher up onto the screen in the front.
Chris, I got a quick question about the schedule of, and I may have this wrong, I'm not sure. But I think at the high school, it's the only one that's going to rotate day one, day two through and not have the fixed day. Did that create any difficulties with families? And, I mean, I don't know, I'm just putting my two-year-ago hat on and thinking about the kids who walk into the building and say, what day is it? You know, so how's that been working out with having that rotation in terms of scheduling with families and, and just the day-to-day operations? How do you see that going?
Well, we haven't started it yet. So when I, the email that went on Sunday had a day one, day two calendar in there that highlighted the days that were day, for Team A and Team B. So that went, that went out. It also highlighted the days that were set aside for SAT and PSAT testing. So we've answered some emails in regards to the question of, you know, of how does that rotation work? And I referred them back to that calendar that I had sent out on Sunday. So we haven't gone into it yet. There is some concern over, you know, not what we had done in the spring with the consistent Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Right.
That's, that's where the concern has come up with staff and with parents. I haven't had any emails from students around that, but there've been some emails with parents and lots of conversations. We had a family meeting on Tuesday, we talked about it as well. I've had individual conversations in regards to not the consistent, you know, saying that Team A is going to be on, in on Monday and Tuesday every week, for instance.
Right.
What is the concern? Just confusion on where I should be on any given day?
Right, because we're in teams. So if Team A comes in on Monday and Tuesday, then they're off Wednesday, and not Wednesday, they're not off, but they're not in the building on Wednesday, Thursday, and then they're back in the building on Friday, Monday.
Right. So it's just keeping track and that. And those days will shift, just because of the number of days in a week is odd. So that'll, so people just have to focus on that.
Right. And it, it did not affect, it did, so I, if you look at that calendar, it goes from now until, I think I did all the way through December. So with some hope that maybe at the end of January, we're able to get back into the building. But the, the number of days they're in the building is, is identical. So Team A is not in the building two more extra days than Team B.
Right. And in regard to the synchronous stuff, has there been any more discussion about that? Places where it might work well, and maybe, I don't know, places where it might not work well?
Yeah, no, thanks, Rob. I've been having some conversation with a few faculty member that would, few faculty members that would like to pilot it. And, but I asked if we can just start school first. We did, we did supply some training through articles and through some videos that we found from Cornell University and some other videos that, where Cornell had put out different professional development videos for synchronous learning. So even though it was geared towards their learning institution, there was a lot of information in there that I think teachers could pull from, and then, you know, adapt it to their own teaching. So, and I had some conversations with, with some teachers who had learned some things from that, enjoyed watching the videos, gave them some opportunity to think differently about how they would approach their class if they had to go full synchronous. The area that is looking to do some piloting was in the area of math. So I've had some conversations with Jim Brazard about his ideas on how that might work. I'm, I'm interested maybe to listen a little bit more about how it's working for Seth's. And since Seth is, is kind of going there. So as we get closer to starting school, then I can kind of shift more into working with staff there and getting that done.
Right.
I think it can happen. I just, I just need to work also still with Matt on the technology side of that.
And if the, if the straight rotating day one, day two gets a little gummy, would you foresee reverting back to one fixed day where you're, you're all remote? And kind of like it did last year?
Yeah, I think if, I think if you, if you look at my record, and if we go back Yeah, I think if I think if you if you look at my record, and if we go back to the reassessment piece, Steve, I think one day at a at a school board meeting said I've been a bulldog with reassessment because we changed the reassessment plan three years in a row after reassessing the reassessment plan. Last spring, when we looked at the schedule, you know, every two weeks, we looked at it. Right? And some adjustments and changes. So you know, we'll see how this goes to start. And if it's if it's really just not working, obviously, we're not, I wouldn't as a building principal, say we need to continue this just because we put it out there on paper. It would be further discussions with, you know, the administrative council with the faculty and then coming back to the board to just share some of the feedback. I don't, you know, we haven't talked about it at a leadership level, but if you also remember in the spring, I think we did several surveys throughout the spring just to get some parent feedback as well. So I would imagine we would probably do the same thing again and then make some adjustments and decisions based off of that as well.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
No, thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions for Chris? It's really helpful. You guys have been, that's a lot. It's a lot to, it's a lot of moving pieces. You know, so I appreciate the the updates and the communication with with our parents. I think they really appreciate it as well. All right. I think you're going to get demoted.
Well, Chris, if you don't mind staying for the middle school sports and the interscholastic sports discussion, and then we'll get you and Mandy out of here after that, if that's all right.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Not demoted quite yet.
No, so last week, last week, we spent quite a bit of time taking a look at the high school sports, the math and and we voted on and put on that piece. Just wanted to make sure we deliver it in purposeful about where we are in middle school sports, ensuring if that's where the board would like to be. So just a little, and I appreciate Dan's advocacy. So similarly to the high schools, the high school sports, the notion is to cohort where you pay play just regional teams and you focus on one team playing both in soccer and field hockey and cross country, trying to do that in the same week. So that parallels. What Dan has recommended for the middle school sports this season, really what's best for kids is to not have any any cuts, not reduce. We want as many kids playing as possible. And with the short season, by the time he did tryouts, it really wouldn't. So once we get going, Dan would like to get get going and and we'll take a look. Once we get the numbers, I may come back with limited support or second adults. So what would happen is we are, we have a cap on buses, right? We know that we're about 24 on buses. So we could have example on on team A plays this week and team B, you know, we just divide the games. The most important thing is playing and try and get that experience and that movement after school. So if everybody doesn't play, you know, allowed to go on the trip for every game, I think that's understandable and and we can work that out. But I think what we're trying to do is middle school sports philosophically this year, maximize participation and movement after school. We think that's really what's best for kids. And that's it's a sea change, but it's a good sea change where we are right now in our current climate. So that's the recommendation is we run the cohorted regional tri-county local. Again, taking a look at where we are in numbers and have all students participate and giving up, if you will, the game time throughout the kids in the middle school. And if we get, for example, 100 kids playing boy soccer, I'll come back and we'll talk about how we manage that safely and and supported and and support them. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So there are, there are some middle school sport nominations down under personnel. Everybody okay? Thank you. And the last, and I appreciate all the discussions with Jim. I know he's here, but Jim and I spent a lot of time talking injury as well. And I and I, as as I talked about a long time ago, we had one normal meeting about the five tenants that care. One of them has assumed best intentions. I just I really appreciate all the discussion about how we can have interscholastic sports and do everything we can to promote safety. And that's that's where the board is. That's where everybody is. We're trying to do this. So we did pass a mask policy. And as things now becoming, you know, as we're starting to implement and starting to think about that and do discussions. The mask policy is written now says if you're on right, 100, we have mandatory requirement for masks at school functions. Well, that integration, we're about to integrate with the interscholastic interscholastic sports program. So I just want to be purposeful and deliberate about this discussion. If a team comes to the to play soccer, field hockey at our school, our mask policy says that they have to wear a mask. And so there is, and and some districts are are not are not putting forth 100% mask for, you know, during competition. So and there is, right now, as it stands, that that has to be worked through because we, if a team comes and we don't have them wear masks, then they are actually in violation of our mask policy. And if the board now, how the board can certainly direct what team, if the board believes that the only teams that we should be played are abide by a similar policy, that would just have a significant impact on the season because right now I don't know how expansive it Hillsborough Daring has adopted a similar policy. My understanding is that Bedford has adopted a similar policy. I had heard that Concord had adopted, but Dan told me today that Concord has made it, I think, encouraged, but not necessarily required in their sports, except maybe football. And and so I just want to make, just to have a discussion with the board. Either we can certainly carve out a segment of the policy allowing for a team to participate following their own mask guidelines. Or we can do a number of things, but currently there could be a conflict between, for example, if a student comes to watch a game, they're going to wear a mask. But we'd have to put something in there if they're going to participate following their own school's policy, or we'd have to be very selective in this in this teams that we compete against. I'm not sure if that was very clear.
If I got a couple of quick ones, because when you're saying required while playing, that sounds a little different than what we discussed and agreed to last week. So you're saying the required on the bus, on the sideline, warmups, but in actual play, it's still strongly encouraged and you've attempted.
With a goal of 100, and I apologize, Rob, I didn't, I didn't need to go there, but I do think we'd probably end up having more students, right, playing with a mask to abide by our policy where some districts might not have that threshold at all. And because we had a great goal of 100% building up tolerance and all that. So I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to conflate that. But I agree with you. So but we have a strong statement, right, that our goal is trying to get to 100% mask compliance. But if there's a health issue or if it's something that doesn't happen, there is a side out on that. But is that, I guess, how is that guideline going to be applied to competitive, to schools who come to visit in the competition level? I guess that's the question, or should we make a stronger carve out for that?
It's an odd issue because the primary benefit of the mask is to protect the other person. So we are protecting other people and then we're inviting people to play with us who are not protecting us. And that is, so I don't want to make everyone's life difficult, but that seems an odd thing, position to take. We will protect you, but we will not ask you to protect us. That's concerning.
Although, I mean, so looking at the what we passed last week, we said masks or face coverings are suggested at all times. They're required with athletes are not involved in physical play. Coaches will encourage athletes to wear masks during physical play. I mean, I, I, I think that we could probably apply these rules to teams, in my opinion, we could apply these rules to teams coming here and say, we suggest masks at all times, we encourage, you know, we encourage you to wear masks during physical play. That is 100% in line with what we passed. We go the step forward for our our athletes. It says, Hockington athletes will work towards 100% mask compliance by building mask tolerance. You know, and I don't know if that's where we want the carve out for teams that were playing. But sort of as it stands and what we put forward last week, it it seems like it would apply.
And I'm happy to make that request. I talked to Dan. I'm happy to, as a superintendent of schools, encourage mask wearing in competition with our school. I feel that, you know, I have a relationship with every single superintendent, Dan, Chris as well, has with principals and Dan. So certainly in meeting that standard of encouraging, but I just wanted to really be, make sure we were had a deliberate discussion about this because it, and there is a little bit, I agree, Andrew, we left the door open, but there's a little funkiness.
Yes, Steve, I mean, I would like to see that communicated, let me make sure I'm off mute, to the other teams. I would get really concerned if a team were to show up and just flagrantly say, you know, we're not doing any of that. And at that point, I think that it would be within our best interest to say, well, you know, we're just not going to play this game because it doesn't fit our safety guidelines. You know, and that's
It's a possible.
And thank you, I appreciate. So happily, Dan and I communicate that these are our expectations, but if if a team comes and they understand that, but but their information and their policy and their practice is not during competition because they believe that is what is safer for their athletes.
Right.
Is that a situation that you'd be uncomfortable with us competing?
I don't, I mean, I don't. I think ours in a similar way says that, but it's on an individual basis, you know? And if a school district has that across the board, then that sort of muddies the water a little bit. As Seth said, this is a tough one, but I would at least like to see all teams living to the letter of the law on everything else right up to play.
Yeah.
And then if, again, if everybody on their team is not wearing a mask, then you really got to wonder whether or not they they even tried to to want to do that. So I'm not sure how we bridge that gap to, you want to play Hockington? These are the, no pun intended, the rules of the game.
Well, we have a little bit of time. So why don't, between now and the next meeting, why don't I make some calls? I'm happy to talk to the superintendents. It's a regional, talk to them and and see where they are about this and what we're trying to spear intent. Seth, I think you articulated particularly particularly well that this is about trying to ensure safety during it. And our goal is to do, you know, we're and Jim said this today in the discussion that we are committed to protecting you by wearing a mask. And we'd really like all consideration and discussion about that. We have to get it out a little sooner because it's not like you just throw a specific mask on, you know what I mean? I mean, this is, there's masks that are built for this kind of competition, but I'm happy to start those conversations and have Dan start those conversations with the superintendents this week. And I can bring back to see how far we got with them.
Right. You know, I think about what Dan said, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, but really the way the season is built, every game is a scrimmage. Right? I mean, it's going to be an open tournament at the end. This is not, this is a scrimmage and it doesn't need to be. You want, you want competition, but if we're saying we can't have a level of intensity because we're wearing a mask, you might be missing the bigger picture of what we're all dealing with.
I appreciate.
When do they, when do they plan the schedule? I just.
The schedule is already being been built in the regional approach. Our cohort, John Stark, Merrimack Valley, Pembroke, Bo. I think that's our cohort. I don't know how many, I don't know if that's four or five. But I will begin by calling those superintendents and see where they're at. I do believe that I, I, I think Dan got some word that if if they needed to comply with that, they respect that from one school. So let me just bring back some more data. If that's all right with, with, I think with the spirit intent of Andrew, what you talked about and Rob and Seth, I think we can manage that.
I guess that that I, that sounds good to me. I think the other thing that would be helpful would just be knowing what they're, so we, you know, we pass this whole sports and masks policy. That's that's a little longer than just the mask piece. So if other schools are also doing the temperature checks and they're doing the screenings and they are low, you know, I think there are other things that could also be in place that would make people feel safer.
And and those are universal. All teams in the region have, the cohort has agreed to the screening and communication. It really is. And we'll see where they come on this because the goal was to protect their athletes. This is a thing that we're trying to do to ensure. So if you don't mind, I'll make some calls and report back next week or next meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chris, Chris, you all said, does that sound good to you moving forward in that way?
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Any questions for Manny before I demote her? Manny was just there, just in case there were questions about in any of the openings, Clint, she's working really hard on making all this work from the student services side. All right, you guys get a get out of jail free card, not Michelle, though.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Manny. Thanks, Chris.
Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Thanks, Chris.
I just wanted to update. This week, we had a meeting with our two after school programs, Boys and Girls Club and Tween School and Home. Just Bill and I met with them, just a couple of positives. The after school programs are in place, they're staffed and they have registration and they're working on now that they know the class list, you know, what days are going to be there. Bill and I talked with both programs about the possibility of alternate day support for families because I know that's a burden. The Boys and Girls Club is attempt is developing that between school, they're staffed really, really for an after school program. So the Boys and Girls Club have a number of sites that support regional, their Bradley Street, where there are some Hockington families who participated in the Boys and Girls Club summer program, who will be getting off day, the at home day support at the Bradley Street. They still have two additional rooms, so they can fit about 10, 10 to 15 people in their rooms. So there's more capacity. You know, once the the barrier for the Boys and Girls Club expanding, I don't know if you've caught it in the paper, they've talked about expanding to the Steeplegate Mall. They've, they have the Eastman, the old former Eastman School is a Boys and Girls Club satellite, and they have Bradley Street. So for the Boys and Girls Club, the physical plan is not the barrier, it's the staffing that's a barrier. And they also, I don't know if you, they moved to run the New Hampshire tech program, their preschool program. So they are running ads, they are trying to hire staff as much as they can. They do want to grow. They would love to, and Amy would love to be able at Maple, for example, to give them a room during the day to provide some offsite support. But right now, I would say they have more capacity in Concord to fill before. And obviously, we had 15 people in Hop. We could do something in Hop if we had a staff member. But right now, they're building, trying to build out the supports in the opportunities in Concord. So they're running ads everywhere. If anybody out there referrals, anybody who's looking for support, they do a great training. We work with Boys and Girls for a long time. They train and they support. And they have great experience working in a pandemic because they've been working for essential workers, I think, throughout the pandemic. So they're quite professional in their work. So there is currently, just to be clear, there is no off day support in Hop yet, but there is a desire to do that by the Boys and Girls Club. They're just trying to build out the staff. And we'll keep you posted.
Great. That's really helpful. Hopefully.
But the after school programs will be up and running on the 14th.
And are those going to be running every single day for folks? And will it only be for kids who are scheduled for that day? Or could it be?
You know, I don't know if it drops off in the last two hours. I don't know. I think Boys and Girls Club seem to have a little bit more capacity in Tween School. So the Boys and Girls Club, perhaps if that, maybe if that helps someone gets a couple hours in.
Thanks.
Everybody okay? The last piece, and this will be a traditional update. And I do, I just want to put a shout out to the, you know, the last time we've asked community member for some support and I got some some great additions or revisions to this document by some community members, which I really like. I mean, this is to learn from the people in this community, which I find are extraordinary, sort of knowledgeable. So this is our third iteration. And just a couple of things, we realigned less than one, we put between, I'm not sharing the screen, am I?
Yeah, I was going to ask if you could share it with us. Thanks.
Sorry, I wasn't the sharpest tool in the shed right there. Do you see it now? Is that okay?
Perfect. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. It's been a long, as Andrew knows, it's been a long couple of weeks. Um, so what we've done, and there were some questions about why Harvard Global Health, and one of the things we liked, the $100,000 daily new cases, it's 100,000 population daily new cases. And so what a community member did is we get that number from the daily DHHS briefing. So the number of new cases and I can, so right now, at the time I did the notes, we were at point nine. So that would put us at less than one. So that's on track for containment. So that would be the the green area. And that is not coming from Harvard Global, Global Health. That's coming from DHHS because they produce the daily new cases per 100,000 people every day. The community member has built the spreadsheet. The spreadsheet is now linked and it did, it aligns with the colors. So it actually produced by color. So if you went on the spreadsheet, and I don't think I can, I can show, it's aligned with the colors. And so now we have used the daily New Hampshire number versus the Harvard Global. It's good stuff. And that's where we are. So today, and we're in green also, and Andrew and I spoke about this earlier, the state has put out a dashboard and we'll be taking a look at that as well. Norm, I think you've sent that around too. So thank you. Just with a whole bunch of data, actually reporting by school. Uh, just with a whole bunch of data, actually reporting by school, uh, anytime, right? Anytime there is a case in a school, it will be added to the dashboard and people can look in their schools.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's where we are, and you'll get this every meeting.
Perfect. And this is also available, will be available on our, um, what do we call it, the return to school, um, link on the district website.
Yeah, and I'll put each version, uh, I think I put two, so every week I'll just update it so people can track it over time.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And, and the word version has a live link, so maybe I'll put the word version, so people can actually click on the live links.
I think that would be really helpful, because I think it's, you know, it's just great to be able to see that information.
So I will do that. Um, when the one I put up will be just the live linked word version. Everybody okay?
Yeah, great.
That's it for the back to school stuff.
Are there, before we move on, are there any other questions, anything else that, that folks are thinking about before we move on to school operations? It's a wild crew tonight. All right, let's keep going. Thanks. Thanks, Steve.
Sure. So just a couple of quick things under the school board operations, and I put them in board notes. And if, if it works, I really would, and, and Norm can speak to this under the building committee and communication, it would be great to walk through the buildings with the board. The Herald is a quick one, because it's just taking a look at, that's what Bill alluded to. But you could see next week, you could actually see the, the renovations and the progress. I just started the bidding, um, Tuesday at seven forty-five, Thursday at three, and then, uh, Friday, what time? I don't know if that was an afternoon one, I don't have it right here.
It was twelve.
Twelve, thanks, thanks. And I'm happy to post those, it's not really a meeting, but, you know, the board gets together, it's, it's a nice thing to post them. But, uh, you certainly wouldn't have to come in, what would, the hope is to get some videos up and, and so the community can see what's going on. But it would be Tuesday, seven forty-five, that's after the holiday, Thursday at three, then Friday at noon, Norm, is that what it was?
Yeah.
Perfect. Any thoughts on those dates? Anybody interested?
A shortier, short day, right? It'd be a short, quick.
Quick, yeah, I don't think it's more than fifteen, twenty minutes, if not, to walk Maple High School, a little longer, but not much. And then, uh, Herald on Friday, it's kind of cool. Oh yeah, well, that would be after, uh, I do that noon because the kindergartners are there.
That's all next, all next week, correct?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that's good.
I won't be able to join you guys on the eighth, but I will, it's primary day.
Oh, primary day. I won't be on the eighth. I'll be.
That might be a little, that day might be a little busy.
All right, so, you know, I, I'm sorry, I didn't think of that. Why don't I, why don't we make, we'll make the Maple Street one the next week. We'll just do two this week. We'll go Thursday, Friday.
Yeah.
There's no rush. I apologize.
Those are at noon, you said?
Uh, Thursdays at three, Fridays at noon.
Okay.
And then I'll, I'll send out a date to you. I'll pick a, a, a date for the following week.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Steve. I think that'd be great.
And I'll post them.
Perfect.
And right before the meeting, Seth, actually, did Jim talk with you about the date and stuff?
Yeah, uh, I saw it right before the meeting, so as I understand it, we will have a, another school board meeting on September, Wednesday, September sixteenth. At five PM for the purpose of meeting with our superintendent search firm for the, um, goal of planning out the search. And I'm told from my discussions with, uh, one of the consultants, that it's typically, it can be a ninety minutes to two hour meeting. I think the length of the meeting will determine, will be determined by the pre-work, maybe that we will do next Thursday. I think we should wait till Jim is here, because there's no point having some of these discussions about who's on the search committee without Jim being here. So I would suggest that we do that next Thursday, and hopefully that'll make us more focused. And some of our maybe internal disagreements have been ironed out in advance of some of the questions I know we're, we're going to be asked on the sixteenth. So that'd be my plan.
Mr. Seth, I think we'll post that as both some, some in, uh, in public and some non-public, we'll, we'll post.
Yeah, and I, and I want to talk with the, I, I didn't, I haven't thought all that through. So yes, and then I want to, you know, talk with the consultants about which parts they think, and then based on our laws, which parts we think should be public and which parts should be non-public.
Norm, did you have a question?
No, that's exactly what I was asking. I didn't know if it was all non-public or some public, so it's both.
I think that there can be at least an introductory period in which the community can see our consultants and get an overview of what their goal is. But there are definitely some parts of this that I think are non, are non-public.
Awesome.
So I'm going to put together a posting for the next two weeks, including the tours, including the sixteenth, including the, the tenth. And make sure everything is posted with links and, and all the zooms and all that fun stuff. And I'll get that right out. That way everything is posted and, and that'll be taken care of. And it'll be all in the website calendar and we'll be good to go. So Donna and I will work on that by the beginning of next week. We'll have everything posted for the next two weeks.
Thank you so much.
Good.
All right, building committee update, is that?
That is me. Yes. Um, so I, I just want to say I'm very happy that the leadership's excited about what's going on in their, um, in their school building. Quite a bit's happened, but I'm happy to report that pretty much phase one at Maple Street in the high school is complete for this week. So for the first phase of the project, so what's going on at Maple Street is, of course, the restrooms are going to be complete. So we're going to have restrooms all renovated over there. I'm excited to report. Plans for construction is going to be finished by this week. Um, the ramp will be, um, complete by September twentieth, so that's important. We had a little of a longer lead time on that, but September twentieth is the date for that to be complete. Um, over at the high school, the only thing they're working on a little bit is, um, chasing down some of the leaks on the roof. Um, they're having a couple of spots where they're, um, looking into to get dressed. The fifth floor classroom, um, will be completed in, in a day or two. Um, and then they're out, they're all done at those two locations. They're going to be focusing all their attention over at Harold Martin. And they're going to be doing concrete footends. We, was poured last week. Some of the wall foundations are going to be going up. So a lot of the work's going to be going on over at Harold Martin now, where the construction, people are aware that students are going back to school. So they gotta make sure they have their COVID, COVID, um, procedures in place and making sure they understand the flow in traffic of, um, the building. So we're getting, we're getting closer and closer and closer to, uh, focusing our attention at Harold Martin. Um, Steve, what was the ice, the ice machine that you had mentioned? What was that again?
Sure.
Yeah.
This is all like the minutia that we're getting, so, um, the, the project has redesigned some of the locker room areas and built some storage and some storage. But we've also, the ninety-seven, ninety-eight project put a training room where the ice machine is actually being able to access both gender locker room. And that's a little bit funky that you, so, um, we are working on moving the, the, the ice, um, the ice machine. So it's a place and really sealing off that those funky entrances, there's plenty of egress. But we're actually trying to fix a funky design from ninety-seven, ninety-eight, making sure that both locker rooms have the appropriate privacy and lack of access. Just for all those wonderful reasons. So, uh, it's good. There were, um, I appreciate the flexibility in Turner. Uh, once they understood the issues and, and how to have a, the ice machine, just real, it's, it's, you really want to limit the number of people that actually use it, because it's a sanitary thing. So we want to make sure we have a, a, some supervision for it and we're putting that together. So, um, we're, a, a number of, of sub projects are fixing the ninety-seven, ninety-eight, and this is just one of them.
Thanks, Steve. And then I'd say the last thing, that probably the most important thing is our new communications plan. Um, we had a lengthy discussion about how we want to communicate, um, this project, um, with the community. Um, I know Andrea, we had, um, a couple of emails between you and Gordon. Um, the, the plan is, um, usually on Mondays, we have a, um, a brief meeting with the leaders of the, of the project. And they go through what they're going to do for the week and what's been updated, any problems, any hiccups. The plan is, is Gordon is, Steve or myself will be emailing Andrea an update on this, um, with photos. Any videos that we have, basically giving the community on a current up to date on the project. Um, Andrea's done a fantastic job of communicating the, to the community and what's going on with this board, from the superintendent search to what's happened at the board meetings. What's been happening with policy, all on Facebook, which is a, it's, which is a really popular platform for our community to get resourceful information. So on Fridays, um, Andrea will be uploading updates from the facility project and other updates like you've been doing normally, Andrea, if that's, that's correct. Just to communicate this to the community. So she'll begin access to our Hopton School District page on Facebook, um, where she'll be able to provide update from this facility project along with other things too. We're going to be revamping a little bit of the website also, um, in order to show people that don't go on Facebook, that prefer using the Hopton, um, schools.org website. Uh, we're going to update information for the facility project there with photos and, um, additional information. So I want to say thank you to Steve for giving Andrea access to, um, Facebook.
Thank you.
I think it's, I think it's great, um, that we have that avenue of being able to really show the community that we really appreciate them giving us this bond and that we're putting it to good use and that, um, Andrea, I look forward to working with you with update on that. And I appreciate the board's support and thank you for taking on the, the responsibility. I know it's a lot of work, but you've done a fantastic job and many, many, um, proceeds out there. So thank you, um, for everything.
Sure. Well, and I'll, I'll include these in my updates. I've been sending updates to all three newsletters as well after our board meeting, so I'm happy to do that, you know? Communication. I like it.
Yeah, and I think it's great, because a lot of people have asked for photos and, uh, and I encourage our, our leadership team, if they're taking videos, to send them out to, uh, to Andrea. You know, any way we can get more, 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 more material out there is the better, I feel. And that is your update.
And Norm, we got an early preview of the new website, so it's coming soon. It'll look really, you'll really like it, so.
All right.
I think the next few weeks, month, so you'll see, uh, it's starting to migrate this stuff, so it's, it looks nice and I feel like.
And tomorrow, Andrea, you'll have your, Steve, you'll be able to coordinate the first update tomorrow for, for Andrea with what we discussed?
I hope so.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
I have confidence. Um, I, I did actually have a quick building project question though. Uh, so how many phases are there? I know that you said that we completed phase one at Maple Street and the middle high school. How many phases are there?
Good question, Steve.
They'll really, so, um, the next time they'll pick it up will be June, depending on, you know, the year, of course, if there's any time. And so the, the, between June and certainly August, September, maybe a little bit of leaking in October will be phase two, and that'll be it at those schools. Um, and so that's flooring, obviously at the high school, it's science labs, um, it's flooring. And of course, we've got, at, at Herald, it's the addition plus the, uh, fire suppression. Um, but they're going to be pretty constant, so they won't, they won't leave Herald. And so it's just a long, uh, until it's actually done, but they're going to come back to the high school and Maple Street to pick up the phase. And right now, if all goes well, we, in some ways, we hope June, because that means we've been in school the whole time and things are good.
And they did do a walkthrough with us that, you know, when people are coming onsite subs and stuff, they're having their temperature checked. And they're also having their background sticker on their, on their, um, on their helmet. So they have their own procedures for, um, what's going on and, um, they understand our mask policy. So it's all been in sync and reinforced with them that this is our policy and this is our expected, uh, expected from you all.
Great. Thank you. Anyone have any other questions? Nope. All right, personnel.
Some quick personnel, there's a typo. It's supposed to say Tina Upton instead of Tina Update. I don't know how that got through me, but it's been that type of week. Um, so, um, we, this year, we were, because of, of, of this, where we're at, we're putting some two months, trying to get the school year off, started really well. We're putting a, a secondary, long-term, a permanent substitute and a two-month assignment at Maple, I'm sorry, at the elementary schools. Just trying to add another set of hands in case we need it due to absences and quarantines and all those things. So Tina Upton, who's been a longtime sub for us, um, and she's actually has, we have a staff member who has, uh, uh, some support will be out. So she'll be right in it for the first two weeks, teaching in our schools. And then she'll be there just in case to fill in, and if someone does have to quarantine or, you know, who can't work it remotely or things like that. So it's another set of hands and we'll have another one coming. And these are, we wanted to just do this two months at a time to see where we're at. We don't want to commit to a full year yet, because we just don't know where we're at. So this is a two-month-ish assignment, um, and grateful to have Tina's service. The other real quick, and, and, uh, Amy, Bill and Chris alluded to, and I just want to just have a, a little bit of piece about, um, just very appreciative of the professionalism of the staff. You know, and, and the flexibility of the staff. So as Bill alluded to, and Amy, we, because of the, now we have the remote numbers, we've had to move staff around. And, um, there was even a case where by contract, we can have an involuntary transfer. And because, you know, people have their design about why they came into teaching, and of course, maybe remote wasn't exactly right in their vision. But they're just, the professionalism, all hands on deck and willingness to support kids, um, it's just, it just came through. And we're also working through the Americans with Disabilities Act, as Chris alluded to, we're working through every single request, Michelle and I. Uh, we've got some consults from some of her colleagues. We went through every single case, I think, twice, um, and using our, our support. So we, we, we've done that piece, um, and we were sort of making sure we followed the law there. And also we've got some work to do, but I really appreciate the support staff and got to work with them and, and their willingness to support and help us run the schools. We have some work to do on, on redefining some roles and things, but I appreciate their spirit as well as trying to help and trying to make this all happen. The, the personnel situation is connected to running these type of schools, it's so new. Um, but I am very appreciative of the professionalism and flexibility of the staff. The next piece, and this follows where the previous discussion in our last week. So what comes forward now is the fall nomination slate. We're one of the few school districts that actually issues contracts to our coaches. And we think a binding contract is, is a good thing. So, um, there is a slate included in the packet, um, and I also would appreciate, so for those, we call Schedule B, and Rob knows. So Schedule B is an appendix in the collective bargaining agreement. So it is part, the, the compensation for stipended positions or after school day outside of school positions are considered in appendix or Schedule B. It's a negotiated piece with the association and it gets voted on in that piece. So what's, um, different this year is, if we know that they, the season, the fall season was reduced by three weeks. And I very much appreciate working with the HEA and taking a look at, um, a, because the season is shorter, uh, uh, taking a look at a reduction in the salary for those positions. Uh, and they very, uh, we're, we're working together on this and I think we're close. Um, and I really appreciate it. And one of the things that this allows us to do, and they understand the importance of safety, is take that, those funds to fund some assistant coaches. And it's, it's, uh, right now, the traditional assistant coaches, it fits. So if you, and the, the proposal that Dan and I in the HEA have talked about is, uh, the three-week reduction is about a seventy, about a seventy-five percent, about a quarter reduction in the salary. Um, but in full transparency, once the season begins, we would like to, uh, put a minimum of fifty percent of their salaries. So that's because they've already allocated their time and they've committed to this time. And then if they finish the season altogether, it would be a seventy-five percent of what the traditional season, and that's pretty close to the three-week reduction. And that carve out or that, that percent off, it, it does, uh, really close to a twenty-five percent reduction on the assistant coaches as well. So we can fund it out of those lines, but I can't say exactly, because as Michelle and I talked about today, and Rob, you know this. There's some interesting, there's a, there's a one through four, right, slot for years of experience, a five through eight and a nine. And to be fully transparent, I didn't go through and know each coach's position. So I just calculated on what was close. Michelle would be the one that would go through and do the each coach. But I'm pretty confident that we're very, very close. By reducing the, uh, full season salary by twenty-five percent, we can then fund the assistant coaches, providing another set of hands for hand sanitizer to ensure we do the screenings. To ensure that we're wearing masks and, and, and there just in case, you know, if we have other issues. So, um, it's kind of funding through that same line, if you will, um, because of the savings to the shortened season. Uh, now if, uh, next week, if we started getting signups, if we get seventy-two kids for girls soccer at the middle school, we may be coming back and working on some kind of secondary support there as well. Dan will know that after he starts. But my recommendation coming forward is to support the assistants on the nomination slate through the reduction of the same lines, if you will, from the full season. Does that make sense?
Yep. Steve, um, with their, I think I asked this last week, I, I would assume there'd also be some savings in the transportation line from preseason games and games that we have not executed now. And. from preseason games and games that we have not executed now and playing once a week.
Exactly what Michelle said. Yeah, you got it, Rob. We will not be having the 18-game season. So there is, there is transportation savings, and yes, so this is, there is our funds within this line or department, both in the reduction of salary and as well as on used transportation, that will be able to support increasing safety, increasing compliance with hand sanitizer, with mask-wearing, social distancing and being there. So I think it's a, I think it's the right thing to do and a way to fund it. It is not, you know, taking it from other lines or from other areas. It's really built right in.
Great, thank you. One thing I just want to say quickly, I think what's important about this is that, you know, when we passed this last budget, no assistance was part of it, and the board's not going back on its work. The head coaches have their salary reduced in order to fund the assistance for, for sports, correct, Steve?
So, just to be fully, and I've cleared, the season was reduced, which is a commensurate reduction in salary, which allows us to apply those funds to increasing student-athlete safety.
Perfect.
Is that?
No, that makes completely, that makes completely.
You all right in that one? I mean, that's my recommendation coming forward, the rationale and how we fund it, trying to be as transparent as we can. In this day and age, a second set of adults, actually, I talked to Jay Wood about it. He wants someone on hand sanitizer, full-time duty. You come off your hand sanitizer, you know, you're touching that ball, you're coming off. I like it. I just think it makes sense that we have someone in charge of that, and I think that'll increase safety. Kind of like, I sent my daughter off today with, make sure you have hand sanitizers and all the time. And I just have a second adult, and the intensity of that, I think is going to keep kids safer.
And I don't think the board knows, but maybe they do, that Hillsborough's board approved football also. So that was the other important.
Thank you.
Important leak.
Everybody okay? It is an action item tonight.
Yeah, so since it is an action item, does anyone have strong anti-feelings about this? Great.
Thank you, Steve.
The last piece, and Michelle and I, it's real sadness for us, but happiness, happiness. Jesse Moore, who was our fully accessible bus driver, takes a bus, the lone district bus driver has a lot of responsibility. She did a great job. I'm very happy for her. She's, I think she's trying to become a small business owner and run a small business, which I think is great. She'll miss us, she said, and we're going to miss her, but we accept that resignation with regret tonight.
Yeah, big thank you to Jesse. She, anytime I saw her, she had a smile on her face and just always seemed to go above and beyond. And she dropped off all those materials all last spring. So good, good luck, and thank you to her, definitely.
And the last piece I have for you, and Michelle can pick me up, so, and I, in board notes, where I got to correct the record in board notes. So we use Health Trust as our vendor, right, for our health insurance program. And their board will vote, has not voted yet, but has given us a notice that they plan to vote on a refund of surplus. And so the district will be getting somewhere around, right, Michelle, $125,000, $150,000. Some of that goes back to the premium payers, right? Because if there's a refund and you paid some of the premium, some of our associations have a premium, so they will get a refund. And so that, that counts as revenue. And what that enabled us to do, this unanticipated revenue from health insurance through the soon-to-be Health Trust Board vote, allowed Michelle a chance and us to take a look at all our revenue projections and to see were we conservative, we were too aggressive. And since then, we've actually formed our back-to-school plans. We know how they work, and we believe it'd be appropriate to reduce some of our expectations in the food service department. And so we've been able to adjust and more conservatively estimate our food, our food service revenue, which I think is realistic. And we kind of learned that last year in the spring. Yes, we're back in school, but as Michelle would, it's more grab-and-go. It's a whole different lunch environment. So we expect, at least for a while, to usage be reduced. So it allows us to conservatively budget there. But one thing, I do want to make sure that our tax rate estimate of .7 cents is still intact. Right? So that, that will, we have all expectations that we will not be hiring that at the tax rate setting. So, and Rob, we can talk about this at the finance committee when you and I, you and Norm and I and Michelle decide about it. But unanticipated revenue from health insurance, some goes back to the premium, goes back to the district, allowed us to review all our estimates and conservatively budget and still keep the tax impact where we are in food service, we think is the best interest of the district in stabilizing the tax rate, which is always one of our goals.
And Steve, that's, I understand. Is there a way we can unpack, unpack this for our next finance committee meeting in a little bit? Just a quick, five-minute discussion, so we're clear on it with whatever needs to be presented.
Absolutely.
That'd be fantastic. Awesome.
And Michelle, she wouldn't say, but she was on the board for Health Trust for a number of years, so she can speak to the process and how this worked. She was our rep or the business officials rep for the Health Trust Board, and I learned a lot when she was on the board. It was a really great experience. So she can speak to it too. You got it.
Perfect. Thank you guys so much.
That's all I've got.
All right. Are there any other questions from the board before we move on? All right, so we have made it to public comment number two. So if you have anything you would like to add or comment on, go ahead and raise your hand, and we'd be happy to hear from you. No? Tanya, these meetings where I get to lead. Okey-doaks. All right. Well, we must be doing something okay. So that's great. All right.
Justing a coup here soon. I don't know.
I'm not suggesting a coup, just to make that clear.
Just kidding, just kidding. Sorry, Jim.
Off the Celtics game, that's probably what it is.
Probably. I'm sitting in the fake audience. All right. After, all right, so public comment is closed, and I think we are ready to move on to our action items. So, right? Am I missing anything? I think we're doing?
Nope, you're doing great.
Great. All right. So do I have a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve Tina Upton permanent subposition and date to be determined by the superintendent of schools?
Second.
All right, moved in second. Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Seth?
Seth Abraham, yes.
Andrea Folsom, yes. Do I have a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve Tina Blynn as the grade four PLC team leader?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth Abraham, yes.
Andrea Folsom, yes. So that passes. Do I have a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's nomination of the fall 2020 coaching slate as presented, subject to final approval of the superintendent of schools?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Seth?
Seth Abraham, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
I just want to wish all the coaches and all the assistants good luck this season. I know it's a lot of work, unique times, and wish them all the best of luck. So Norm Gupel is a yes.
Great. And Andrea Folsom is a yes. So that passes. I realize I have not asked for any discussion. If you have discussion, please discuss. All right, so do I have a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the resignation of Jesse Merrill, fully accessible bus driver dated to be determined by the superintendent of schools? And a big thank you to Jesse.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Sure, second.
Great, thanks. All right, Norm?
Discussion real quick. Just want to say thank you. No, it's okay. Just want to say thank you, Jesse, for all your hard work and everything. Norm Gupel is a yes.
Seth?
Seth Abraham, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea Folsom is a yes with appreciation. And do we have any reason for a non-public tonight?
I don't think so. We're going to meet next week, so I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, meeting every week till the end of time. All right, well, thank you guys so much for bearing with me this evening. And I look forward to seeing you next week.
All right. Thanks, thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Have a good hang.
Guys. Yeah, you too. Happy Labor Day.
Bye-bye.